If I can have your attention, please. It's 11 o'clock and we'll start with our welcome to the candidates forum. I'm Archie Oger. I live at 1041 Picket Hill Road in Bristol, New Hampshire. That'll be part of the model that I expect the candidates to use in a few minutes. First of all, I would ask that if you have a cellphone, you turn it off, unmute it, or make certain that it's not going to interrupt the program or the things that we are going to do. I'd like to say thank you to the sponsors of this program, all of the groups that are involved, the library people, town of Bristol, Bristol taxpayers, and anybody who had anything to do with this, thank you very much. And of course, a special thanks to the candidates who will allow themselves to be examined today. Okay? All right. Roles of conduct and decorum. Be polite, be respectful, be humorous, be direct, be clear, be honest, and most of all, be brief. And that's what I plan to do right now. I want to caution you in advance as an audience that I am going to involve you very soon in this whole process, and I'm going to ask you through me to ask questions of the candidates about those issues that are important to you. You know, I have enough questions that it could probably stand here and go ask the candidates the questions, but those aren't questions that you necessarily want to hear answers to. So I'll be thinking about what would you like to ask them. Now, we will go through the school candidates first, and we'll do that from 11 until noon time. We'll take a short break, and then we will go through the positions in the town of Bristol. So let me set the model for the candidates. I am Archie Oger. I live at, and I'm running for, and you then have about a minute and a half or two minutes to make a brief opening statement. Got it? Okay. So, school candidates. Kurt, our last junior to start.
Super. My name's Kurt Schaffner. I live at 31 Spruce Street here in Bristol. Been in the Bristol area for over 20 years, lived in the area, moved back to Bristol, I've lived here almost four years. I have a bachelor's degree in, what is it? Sorry. In business, in global business management.
Thank you.
Archie, you might have to stand up so you can see this.
Sorry.
Okay.
This is what I look like.
Well, you met two parts. You met the introduction, it was brief, at three parts, and I guess it was humorous too. All right. We're still on the school board. Benjamin, would you please be allowed to?
My name's Ben LaRush. I live at 132 Hundred Acre Wood Road here in Bristol. I've been a resident of Bristol for, I guess, eight years now. I currently work for the Bristol Fire Department where I'm a captain and paramedic. I've been there for 10 years this year. I have two boys, a four-year-old and a two-year-old, that fortunately will enter into the school system in the next couple of years, and my wife Jamie, who's a longtime resident of the area, most of you may know, and I have an associate's degree in health sciences from NHDI.
Thank you. From New Hampton. Christine Hoffling-Daval.
Hi there. I am Christine Hoffling-Daval. I'm running for school board in New Hampton. I live at 130 Straits Road. I am, I was born and raised in New Hampton. My family has been around, my siblings have been around for quite some time. Some of you may know them. I have background right now as a teacher in the Guilford Elementary School. I have a daughter who is in fourth grade at the New Hampton Community School, and I think that's probably pretty brief.
That's fine.
I don't have a sense of humor, though.
Well, somehow I remember that differently at New Found Memorial.
I only went to you once, Archie, only once.
All right. Francine Wondelow, if you would be next question.
Thank you, Archie. My name is Fran Wondelow. I live on Oxbo Road in New Hampton, have lived there 36 years. Both of my children graduated from the New Found School System. I was a 14-member, 14-year member of the New Hampshire House of Representatives, and I currently am finishing out my term as your budget committee chairman here in the New Found School District.
Now, we have people from each community that's running for the budget committee for the school district, and so we will start with New Hampton with John Allen Genus II.
Good morning. I'm John Genus II. Live in New Hampton on 143 Riverwood Drive. Lived here my whole life. Born and raised, went to school. All my schooling was pretty much in this school system. Graduated from New Found in '91. Let's see, I have two lovely daughters that go to the school system currently, one at New Hampton Community School and one at the middle school here in Bristol. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, John.
And I think I only went to you once.
And John's dad graduated in 1972.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. It's age.
And we won't discuss how many times I went to you.
Okay. I don't think that I see Paul Ryan here, do you? All right. Paul is a candidate for the budget committee as well. I'm not advocating for any candidate, I'm simply saying that he is a candidate and he did serve on the school board.
Archie.
Right. He's coming now. We'll give him a minute or two.
How many do we elect for each of these positions? You got that?
For school board, you elect one for three years from Bristol, from New Hampton. If we elect one for budget committee, it's for three years, it's one person. And in Bristol, and there are two people running in New Hampton, but we only elect one.
So basically, one per?
Well, basically, one for each office. Now.
No, I saw you sit at the top of the seat, and I thought it was a little.
Okay. Well, let's move on, then. We can proceed and do what we need to do. All right. I said that I'm going to ask the first question.
I'm here.
Oh, my goodness. And you live on Picket Hill, right at the foot, Wrong Dollar.
Wrong Dollar.
Okay.
My name's Christine Hall. I live at 25 Union Street in Bristol. I currently have two children that are in the Bristol Elementary School, a first grader and a second grader. I am a stay-at-home mom currently, and I graduated from Colorado State with an animal science degree. And I'm very interested in getting involved in the education part, and that's.
Thank you, Christine. And it is Christine, like Christine, like I said a minute ago, so I'll try to make certain that I call you appropriately, I think. All right. All right. Now, we have, everyone's had an opportunity at this point, so let me ask the first question. The audience, you start thinking about questions that you will want to ask them very soon. So I'll start off with school board candidates. And my question to, first of all, will be to Francine as the school board candidate. What is Common Core, and what is your position about Common Core?
I'm going to stand up to the people in the back and say, you know, Archie, I have very mixed feelings about Common Core, and I'm very interested in getting a feel for the community and what the other school board members feel about it. There is a lot of controversy over it, particularly in the math part of it, because it teaches math in a totally new way, and a lot of parents are very concerned about that because when their kids come to them and say, you know, would you help me with my homework, they look at it and they can't even figure what the heck is going on. Instead of saying eight plus six equals 14, for example, like we learned, you know, the multiplication tables, this is convoluted, this is all boxes and squares, you have to check it out to come up with that answer that you and I can do like that. The reason behind it is that it's complicated in different ways. So there's a lot of people very uncomfortable with it. You know, over the years, I've lived through many different traditions of education, from Goals 2000 to Race to the Top, Remember New Math, or I guess this is another New Math. It's not only in math, it's in several other things, and some people feel that they have to constantly keep reading into the universe. I'm not sure that that's a good thing, but I'm certainly willing to listen.
Thank you, Fran. All right. The next question I have, I want to get one question to each candidate, and different questions to each candidate, and then we'll open up to what you want to ask them. So the next person should be from Bristol, and we'll ask Kurt. What do you feel is the most pressing issue that faces the Found Area School District?
Should I stand?
If you'd like.
Sure. The interesting part, I have a three-year-old at home. I'm not involved in the school system yet. Will be soon. Really, you know, recent events, I guess, were probably everything, to me, it really revolves around the budget. It's really, that's the biggest thing that I see going on what the taxpayers and the towns are paying, and the school itself, and what the school will cost.
Okay. Thank you. Christine?
Yes.
What are some of the responsibilities of a good school board member?
I think some of the responsibilities of a good school board member is setting goals and setting a vision for the district, and maintaining that vision, and being able to have policies set in place where you can judge how we're doing, you can be measurable. And you need to hold people accountable. You need to, I think, raise the bar on everybody, and I think you also have to have a huge communication with your people, whether it be the people who work in the district or, as you all, the community and the towns. So there's a few different components, definitely, but I think the vision, that's measurable, and a communication.
Thank you. And we have one other school board candidate that needs a question. And yes, and the question is, how can the district improve its test scores?
Well, I think improvement test scores, it's going to come from a couple of different levels. I think it's going to come from, and maybe it's not a Common Core type of situation, but it's to come up with some good standards and have input from the staff and from whether it's, you know, a new curriculum coordinator to develop programs that the kids in the schools, that allows them to accomplish the goal. I think sometimes the testing scenario says, this is the goal, but this is not how we get there, and I think it's going to be part of the role of the select board to oversee, or the school board, sorry, to oversee those programs and make sure that the staff is implementing programs that works for kids, you know, of all ages and of all learning abilities.
Thank you. All right. I will open the school board candidates to questions from the audience through me, if you will. Paul?
Yeah. Last year, Danbury, and this year, Bridgewater and Hebron have warranted articles to withdraw or to instruct the school board to look into the effect of withdrawal from the school district. What effect do you think withdrawal of Bridgewater and Hebron would have on the district, and are you in favor or opposed to that?
To whom would you like to address that?
Any one of them or all of them?
I'll ask for a school board candidate volunteer to say, to grab that question and run. Anybody willing?
I guess, I'll go first, I guess. Well, first of all, if the community votes to do that, you know, you have to accept that community's position. However, I think it would be a mistake. We've been a school district for many years encompassing those communities, and it's worthwhile. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I think there's a lot of concerns about school closings and stuff that might be driving part of it, particularly in Danbury. But when you look at the alternatives for Danbury, where they would go, doesn't seem to be that there's better options for them particularly. The Bridgewater, Hebron, and I hear that they also want to bring in Groton, they still have to tuition kids into the high school system. It'd be very complex figuring out property and the school buildings, and so I think it would be a mistake. There is a long-term study committee that is going to be starting the end of this month looking at all the schools and configuration. Last year, there was a lot of concern about Danbury, it had slipped under 50 students, and there was some talk of perhaps closing it. The budget committee and the school board were able to figure out a way to reduce some costs in Danbury by urging some classrooms to keep it open. So I think doing things like that to keep the community happy is a great thing, and particularly, we also have Hill possibly coming into our school district as well, that will help.
Thank you. I do, I saw that you'll know, I do have a timer over there that says to me that...
Well, I heard a little beep before, so I didn't know if I was waiting for the beep.
We're not nearly shutting anything off, but we want to give a lot of...
It's just to give you about a minute.
Okay. What is it? Waldorf. Waldorf. For France, since the question was originally asked of you. What practical advantage is there to this new math? And how does it, how does it advantage the student? It doesn't sound like, to me, it's any easier to teach. Thank you.
You know, it's a mixed bag. Some teachers like it, other teachers hate it, but they're afraid to really talk about it. I don't really personally see the advantage of it. They base it on what some other countries do that are superior than us in teaching certain subjects. I think that we need more reinforcement from parents and involvement in the school and the education, and that gets us back to where we were. We put a man on the moon. We can certainly come up with new ways to make our students perform better against the world. So I question it.
Audience members, questions?
This question's for Ben.
Do we identify him?
David Hill.
Thank you, David.
Pike's Point Road. How do you feel about the teacher's contract? Are you in favor of it or opposed to it?
I guess overall, I favor it. When there's a collective bargaining unit in place and two sides come to terms that are agreed upon by both sides, I find it difficult from the outside looking in, in my current position, to oppose anything like that. I think that's the, that's the point of collective bargaining. It allows both sides to come out feeling better about themselves, and I think when, you know, if it creates happy employees, happy teachers, that's better for the rest of the students. So, not knowing a lot of the finer details of the contract, I mean, I get that there's a lot of raises involved, and it ultimately ends up being a lot of money, but I am, I'm a strong agreeer in when two sides agree to collectively bargain, that the outcome of that is generally the best interest of both parties.
Thank you. Yes.
Michelle Thayer from Hick Road, Bristol, New Hampshire. And I don't have that. I am in favor of getting rid of Common Core, and I would just like to know how many on the board are in favor of doing away with Common Core?
Are you board members, are you ready to say yes or no?
I am not a proponent of Common Core. I need to be sold out with proof that it works. I have serious concerns about it.
Other candidates? Do you have a position?
As an educator myself, and having the conversations that we have had in regards to what is coming down the pike with this Common Core, I don't know how easy it is going to be to just, like, get rid of it completely, so we need to find sort of a balance. And I think education's focus is going very individualized, and I think that's where this new math or the new focus is. My understanding of Common Core is it's really holding the children more accountable, and actually, everybody, parents, teachers, districts. So I honestly don't know how you could just completely eliminate what's coming in when it's nationwide.
There are schools that are getting rid of it.
They are, they are, definitely. And 100%, I don't know, is that 100% situation?
Fort Worth?
Statewide, or?
From Indiana, and they are pretty much doing away with the Common Core.
Yeah. And that's something I think we have to take further up with our legislation.
Thank you, Christine. Another question from the audience. Steve?
Steve Faber, Baker Street, Bristol. How do you feel about the football program that's in place today towards our school budget? Anyone?
Any candidates wish to address that?
No, I won't.
Yep.
Um, when I grew up, you know, the sports were a big part of, not only my life, but my, I think, how I had an advantage in middle school and in high school. The team-building aspect of it is, it's just something you can't get in the regular school program. You know, that said, I think the program where it lies today is probably at a pretty acceptable level, both financially and in its development. I'm happy that we have it, and I hope it continues the way it is.
Thank you. Other candidates wish to respond to that?
Yes.
Next question.
I guess, you know, sports are, you know, a constant being brought up in regards to how, you know, whether or not to make them continue or not. I find they're very important. I think it helps build confidence in kids, and I think taking them away is not a very smart move.
Thank you. Mary, did you have a question?
My name's Mary McCaffrey. I live at 33 Autumn Lane in Bristol, and I have had the opportunity to go into all the elementary schools. For about three years, I supervised student teachers, and what I found, and a lot of them were in kindergarten and first grade, that there are kindergarten children and first-grade children that are coming to school not ready to learn. Some of them are coming hungry, some of them are coming tired. Would you be willing to put some thought into programs, for the preschool programs, to work with parents to help, basically?
Thank you. School board candidates, or any candidates?
I'll talk about that.
Okay.
It's sad that children are coming in or have to come into kindergarten, having to be already pretty much introduced to their ABCs and their numbers, but that's where we are at, definitely. So, and they do come in hungry, and they do come in, so I would so love to support any kind of a program that could, one, educate parents more in regards to the need of that preschool, and just give them the reinforces, reinforcements, because that foundation is crucial to, in my opinion, a child's development in their future education. So I would think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Christine. Lloyd, then?
Can I?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Archie.
You're welcome.
I know everybody sitting here is thinking, well, gee, I would never send my child tired and hungry to school, and that's unfortunate, but it goes back to the parent. And there comes a point where we have to hold parents responsible and not have school and the government taking over more and more and more, because the more the school starts doing, the less the parent feels that they have to do. So I don't think it's providing services. It is perhaps reaching out to that parent and saying, gee, Jimmy came to school all tired, you know, is he sick? Is there something? You know, if a parent gets a couple of phone calls, they're going to start thinking, I'm going to clean up my act. Once the child gets to school, there's all kind of free, reduced school lunch that they can eat at school, so they don't go hungry until lunch. I just think we tend to just overdo and overdo, and I think it needs to be turned back on the parent and engage the parent to become more responsible, to make sure that their child's ready to learn.
Thank you. Any other candidates that wish to address that particular question?
I guess where I, having younger children and everything, coming in, I was very nurturing with my children, and having the ability that they went to preschool, it gave them that advantage of knowing so much more, because they are to know, by the end of kindergarten, they are to know so much more than in years past. So I am in favor of looking into that.
Thank you. Any other candidates wish to address that? Okay. Lloyd, you have to head to the end.
Excuse me. Lloyd Bellman from Bristol. As you probably know, I'm a member of the board now for a little two more days. I have one question for you. The K through eight is tabled for now, and it'll probably be brought forward. How do you feel about that?
Did you want to address that, any particular candidate?
No, any, not at all.
Okay. Who's willing to grab that one and run?
I answered what the question was.
The question is about the study that was done of the K through eight rearrangement, and that has been tabled by the current school board.
Probably going to be brought forward when you attend, very shortly.
Lloyd is asking what your particular views are about the K through eight and how that should be arranged. So who would like to grab that and run? Go ahead. Miss O'Healy, first?
I have, I guess, a little bit of limited knowledge, paying attention to some of the studies and the information that's been put out there. I really think that whether it's something along these lines, or the potential of Danbury or other towns doing their own thing, or restructuring how they're involved with the school district, I think it's important, I think it's important we look at it. I think that the biggest cost that we really have is, we have a lot of schools in the school district, and that means that there's a lot of staff that comes with that, and that's great, that's jobs, but at the same time, that's really where these increased costs keep coming from. I think there's ways to do it, I think there's ways to accomplish that scenario in a set building. I think that, you know, the concerns over interaction and whatnot, I think they'll go away relatively quickly, you know. I thought of an example, but that's a really bad one about jails. But I mean, you know, there's effective ways to separate populations so that they don't, you know, so that they're still in an adequate learning environment, but we're still meeting the needs of the school district and the taxpayers.
Thank you. Your next question.
Thank you. This kind of was triggered when there was discussion about bringing fifth grade to the middle school, and people didn't want their middle schoolers in with those seven eighth graders. You pull them back to the community schools, those little kindergarten kids are still, they're going to be with the eighth graders. The first problem you had, other than the increased likelihood of staff, is that every single school in the elementary school level would have to go on a building spree, because not one single school in this district at the elementary level could absorb going to eighth grade. So number one, we'd have to build on to all those schools, and all the towns would have to vote to fund all of those building things, which I think is probably pretty unlikely. So that's the first problem with it. I think there are other ways of looking at configuring some of the schools that make more sense, not necessarily closing schools, but maybe shifting around things, and that study committee at the end of March is going to be looking at that, and I think that's the direction we should go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I feel that the, with population changes that we've been going through lately, and getting discussions like Bridgewater and Danbury and the other, you know, community schools, that probably... schools, that probably somewhere down the road, we are going to have to seriously consider a reconfiguration. Well, I don't particularly like the K through eight scenario in the same building, but I think moving forward, we do probably need to look at a, whether that's a campus or looking at just discussions about adding on to the area by the high school, that sort of thing, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address that particular question? All right, I'll look to the audience for another question.
Yep, right there with the hat.
Right there with the hat? Actually, you know, every time that you're on the street, I'd like to get back to that, you know, what you were discussing before. How many kids are, are these kids are going to school, hungry? Brad, maybe if you could, you guys say.
You know, I don't really know if there's an exact number. One of the reasons that we're told we need so many guidance counselors is because our children are so fragile. And they come to school hungry and not ready and tired and traumatized. So I'm not exactly sure what that percentage is, but you know, you can certainly look at the statistics and I don't have them off the top of my head, each community for the free and reduced lunch. But those lunches are available to the children. I think that there are very few low-income children that would not qualify for that so that there is food available to those children when they do get to school. And every single school has a breakfast and a lunch program. And actually, some of them have an after-school program where they actually keep the child until school bus goes down by my way, almost six o'clock at night, that the child is with the school district and with programs. And I'm sure there's tax as part of that before they go home.
Thank you, Brad. Anybody else?
President, I need you.
There are grants, title on services that are sort of extra monies that are utilized to help with those programs. You know, it's a percentage of your population that comes in, whether they're considered homeless. And those numbers are based on that. And homeless can be living with your grandparents, so they're technically, they're not living on the streets. But they have those, those programs set up that are not extra funds to the everyday, the budget to save. So, but there's quite a few.
Let me see if I can find that question is because...
Just a minute.
All right, Archie, let it go. Do you want to bring your speech? I'll leave now.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask, to follow up question on that.
All right. If you ask me to ask, to have the follow-up question, just don't jump in.
All right, don't worry.
Thank you, Mary. Very good question.
Reason why I ask is because, I mean, I'm looking at a town tax and school taxes on a site. Doesn't anybody feel that might be affecting why these people at the county level are saying they give the school hungry? Now I'm looking at, we want to give all these teachers their pay raise. Don't we think that maybe the kids should come before anything? I mean, that's the way I feel. I don't know how many kids in the school district know that.
Eric, specifically, what is your question? I don't think I got the sense of what you're really asking.
Does the board feel that we should be handing out pay raises when kids are going to school hungry?
Okay, thank you. Now who wants to address that question?
Well, I've been dealing with it for the last three years. The budget committee, I voted against the teacher increases. Not that I don't believe that the teachers are due an increase, I just think that a step increase and an increase over three years that is so large is wise at this time. We had a big increase in the school tax rate this past year. I think it went up 7%. I know my tax bill went up several hundred dollars alone on the school part. If you look at a step one teacher, beginning teacher, at the end of that three years, that, those two, two and two and a half, plus the step, meaning it's a 15% increase by that third year, that they will have increased in salary range. When you get to the higher step levels, it's a 17 and a half percent increase. So you think 2% a year, eh, it's not much, but with the increase and the step increase at the same time, it makes it a very big raise. And I don't think our citizens have had that kind of raise in the past and I don't think they're going to be getting it in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address Eric's question? And to paraphrase his question, it was something to do with, should we give the teachers a raise or should we pay the hungry kids, to put it in right?
If I could just follow up on that, actually, I believe that the hungry kids are being fed when they get to school because, you know, they do qualify for the free breakfast program at every school, has a free breakfast program.
Okay. Other candidates do you wish to weigh in on this? Okay, I'll look to the audience for another question. Steve, you had a shot. I heard a person back there with a hand up and brown jacket.
Bob Duan, West Shore Road. Children at different developmental stages have different needs. How do we promote pro-social behavior? How do we minimize bullying? And how do we increase safety? And I'd like the candidates, for all the candidates for the school board to address that.
All right. So candidates for school board position, you heard the question. Who would like to start? I'll go. Go ahead.
Well, I think the all-encompassing answer is, you know, it, I think it goes back to some of the stuff that we've already started, is the majority of it starts at home. I think the more you try, you know, we can't effectively get everybody's test scores up. Who's to say we can effectively get kids ready to learn? Who say we can effectively get them socially prepared to enter the world as a, as a group? It starts at home. I'll tell you that I'm a big fan of some type of an SRO program. I don't know what the answer is for that. I personally felt that the plan that was in place initially for this year, going into the deliberative session, was a fairly good answer. I can understand the concerns that that's going to develop into a lot of other stuff. Me personally, I wouldn't like to see it that way. I would, I would like, if I'm elected in my tenure, to get an SRO in place that develops a good program, a training program for the teachers and staff, guidance counselors, and is an effective part of that, that cycle, the home, school and the community.
Archie, clarification? Is SRO a school resource officer?
Yes, sorry.
Next candidate?
Sure. I don't necessarily agree with the SRO, I can tell you that. Just basically because, you know, I think, I agree with, it's really the home, what we do at home for the community. The school is a school, the community has to support the kids that go into that school. I agree with the idea that, you know, a lot of people just send kids to school, let the school take care of it. I don't, I don't think that's what it's about anymore. Maybe it is, it's just not my opinion, that's not how I see it. The stuff at home has to be taken care of home, at home. SRAs, you know, everybody has their own opinion on it, of course. It's one of the few things that I actually have looked into a little bit. I just don't agree with it. I don't, I don't believe, we've had it lately in the past, maybe they had it some time ago, I'm not familiar with it. I really just think it comes out of the community less than the school. It's not the burden of the school.
I strongly believe, and you're asking kind of like questions on how we meet students with their behaviors, and it seems like they are getting younger and younger and younger with these challenging behaviors, starting even in kindergarten. I believe teachers should be teaching and they need the support of the administration. I think it's the administrator's job to be in charge of having something set in place where, you know, they support their teachers with these parental issues. Mr. Oger, that was your job for many years, that, you know, you went to his office and you had to talk about it. So I would love to focus on where is administration, where are the, where is the policy where you do this and you have a consequence? The kids cannot act like that and it's not the teacher's job.
I don't support an SRO, I'll get that out of the way, since we've kind of gone into two questions in one. However, you know, this thing with the, I absolutely agree with Christine, teachers have to do far more than what they're supposed to be doing. And that goes back to, again, unfortunately, the parents. I have heard time and time again about kids who act terribly in school and when their parents are contacted, it's an attack on the teacher or the administration instead of taking responsibility that their child misbehaved terribly. We have to change that attitude in parents. I don't know how we do it, you know? When you got in trouble in school when I was young, you know, you hope mom and dad didn't find out about it because not only did you have consequences in school, you had consequences when you got home. As far as the bullying, you know, that should be a peer pressure thing, kids should be taught in school that it's not acceptable, but we can't go overboard on it. We can't so insulate kids from anything that hurts their feelings, because then when they get out of school, there's not somebody there, you know, to cuddle them and say, oh, no, 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 I think it's okay. Then they get in the real workplace and there isn't a boss to cuddle with. So you have, it's a fine line and we can't go overboard. I remember sticks and stones may break your bones, I think you still have to, you know, concede that is part of life too.
Thank you. Now, I have asked all school board candidates, fans of that, have a good, if you can, if you wish to weigh in on that? Okay.
I think having two children within the school, I have seen a lot more of younger
age that a lot of, not necessarily bullying, but well, behavior that is just really shocking to me. And, you know, it's not the, yes, it should be put more onto the parents, but the schools need the support for those children so they can teach the other 20 kids in the classroom. You know, but there's got to be a balance. There has to be a balance because it, it shouldn't, you know, I think that that's something that is going to have to definitely be, you know, worked on and I don't really know where. But I guess I'll just leave it.
Thank you. Questions from the audience? Steve?
Curriculum. When most of us in this room grew up, we had shop, home economics, we had woodworking, we had band, we had art, there's five. Today, there's one, basically. It's still in the school, that's music, but it's getting thinner and thinner. Where do you see, when we, in the past 20 to 30 years, we've switched over to curriculum to entice students to take basket weaving, all kinds of everything, even in college today, they do the same thing, take the easy course to get through. Where do you see the future to keep students wanting to stay in school with a better curriculum for preparing them for leaving? So we don't have students getting out, getting, having children, children having children and sending them to schools without any knowledge of what food, just basic maintenance of children is needing. Where do you see, or how can we bring that into Bristol School District?
And Steve, you're asking that to whom?
Any.
Okay. Any candidates? All right. Board members, do you wish to weigh in on that?
I'm not sure the question, if it's directing at any particular curriculum, but I know, you know, my daughter's at the middle school currently and she has band every day. But she also takes, I believe it was tech ed, so she was working, you know, in the shop, engineering, never done that before, loved it. She's actually currently in health-related classes now, so there is that in the school. I am seeing that and she's loving it. So I don't, I'm not quite sure, is that at a high school level you're talking about directly or, but they, there definitely seems to be a lot of those classes that you're referring to at the middle school level.
Thank you, Joe.
As a, my first, I guess if you want to say career, is actually I got my bachelor's in fine arts and photography. So I guess I could be considered one of those that might have tried to take the easy way out, I don't know, but it was pretty hard, I gotta be honest. And I love my photography. However, if I didn't have sort of that art sort of in the beginning, I don't know if I'd have gone that route. My sister went to music therapy, went to college for music therapy. I know that band was a huge part of her life in the Newfound School. So it's falling right now a lot on the teachers where they have to do this differentiated instruction, when they have to sort of create and hit on everything within their own lessons. And that's a lot, that is a lot to put on them. But I still think those kids, if their individual needs, if they're a visual learner, we have to have some kind of supports for them. If they're good at building a car, they should be able to have a program set in place where they can further that into their life. So you really can't eliminate everything. That's my answer.
Archie, I'll answer that too. There is a program where Newfound students can go to Plymouth for some of the construction arts programs, they have a very good program. I think we need more of that. The one thing that you did mention that is a big part of education in these days is technology. I think that's critical, you know, we used to have reading, writing and arithmetic and then you had the, I was a former Future Homakers of America, so I loved the homemaker part. But society's really changed and how, how many people these days cook meals at home anymore? They zap fries in dinners, they eat out. So kids aren't seeing their parents cooking, but they're also not used to having home-cooked meals. I hate to keep going back to the parent and the home life. It's kind of like a cycle. So I think it's important to teach kids that, and I think every kid should have to know how to balance a checkbook, what it costs to live in the real world, you know, have them go look at apartments, you know, have them see what like those costs, because they just don't seem to have a reality check. They think they can quit school, get out of school, get a job, get $8 an hour, boy, that's a huge amount of money to them, but it's not a living wage. And so they don't know that. We need to make sure they know that.
Any other candidates wish to address questions? Okay. Anne, you made your hand up.
Anne Godden, Pika Hill Road, Bristol. Christine had brought up the topic of better communication earlier. I do not have children in the school and I vote on the schools. I do not attend school committee meetings regularly and I vote on the schools. I'm not very good at searching the internet and I vote on the schools. So my question was triggered by Christine, but I would be interested in other people's answer to, how do you better inform the community who are voting on the schools?
Yes?
One of the key things that I've seen over the years with the school board and budget committees and just the communication problem in general is the lack of working with the town, the town officials. One of the things that I want to do moving forward, if I'm elected, would be, I definitely plan on attending everything from PTO meetings to selectmen's meetings in not just New Hampton. I want to come into Bristol, Danbury, Alexandria, all the towns. And, and attend meetings for that town just to get an idea of what's going on in those communities. Sometimes stuff's happening in Hebron that we don't necessarily know about at the school level. And I think going, it's always been the approach for the boards and the committees to, oh, well, they can come to our meetings. I think the voters are voting us in and so I think we have a responsibility to go out.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else? Frank?
Well, there's also the community access, the, the school board meetings are frequently videoed, so those can be viewed there. There's also publications that get put out in the community, like the, for the budget hearings, the school district report and so on. And my phone number is in the phone book and my email address is on the website, if you can just find the website enough to get my email. And so I am very open to people contacting me and asking questions.
Question is, how do we improve the communication, I believe, between voters and the school district?
I also, I think one, to get the communication even through the schools, is one thing that I've always thought as to going into the schools and communicating and being involved with the teachers. You know, I think that would be an important...
You know, I think that would be an important role to do, and whether it's, you know, you're sitting and eating lunch with the children, or if you're going in during an event, during a particular, I know that Mr. Migliore came into the Bristol Elementary School, whoops, and, you know, read, to my understanding, read stories to a class, which I think is huge. I saw that, and I liked that. As a parent, I think that that is one way, in one of many ways, to open the door for communication.
Anybody else want to address community issues yet?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think back to kind of what you were saying, it's, and the internet thing is, is a lot of fun, even for somebody like me who's, you know, thirty-odd years old, I'm, I'm not a Facebook guy, I can barely find stuff on the internet myself. And, you know, I think that really when it comes down to it, I, I think everybody understands that the internet's kind of the way we disseminate information now. And really, the, what I enjoy is to go on a site that, that's understandable, is easy to find information. I don't think that's the school district's website, you know, over the last couple of months trying to find, you know, I don't want to watch a two-hour video, I just want to read through the minutes and figure out the stuff that I need to know. I think that's something we can look at, I think certainly publishing something more regularly, especially those, those middle-of-the-year type cycles. It's always fun this time of year, you get all sorts of information thrown at you, but the truth is, is it's better knowledge to have in August, or September, or something that allows you to start planning more, or if you're going to seek, you know, election to a, to a board or something, that the information's more readily available. And I think, though, we have to understand the cost that's associated with that, just printing stuff's expensive, newspapers are expensive, there's lots of them. I think making the website a little more user-friendly would be huge for a lot of people, even like a younger, technologically okay person.
Thank you. Yes?
David Hill again. I found that attending any kind of a public meeting, whether it be town or school committee, public input always needs to get held off to the end of the meeting. So, you have to sit through all their regular business before you get a chance to say anything. Would you be in favor of allowing input at the beginning or during your sessions so that the people can come, say their piece, and then maybe not have to sit through all the stuff that, the details that they, they don't want?
And that's addressed to school board?
Anybody that wants to?
Yes, I would be in full support of that, and I think that that definitely needs to happen, because that is one place where I've always felt that, I felt like my voice wasn't going to be heard, and I think it would make more of an impact.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Providing a time limit for that and putting that in the beginning of the meetings would certainly be the way they would allow it, and then this is half an act could be conducted.
Anyone else about when the public should be allowed to speak at various meetings, budget committee or school board?
Yeah, I mean, I fully support it. It would, it is, it is, I've been to, you know, quite a few school board meetings over the last few years, and yeah, I think having a little bit more upfront. At times, though, it is a little difficult too, when there's a certain topic that's in discussion, so coming in with thoughts and then maybe also having another period at the end for discussion of things that were communicated throughout the evening might be a possibility, but for general voter and resident discussions, maybe at the beginning, that might be a good, a good plan as well.
Thank you.
I, I think the school board process has been streamlined recently. There used to be two sections for input, the first part of the meeting, and then again at the second part of the meeting. The only caution I would be saying is that somebody might want to start discussing something before it's on the agenda, and getting answers before the whole thing has actually been decided on and discussed, but I'd be open to having that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Audience? Ben?
I suppose I should phrase this in the form of a question, and I'm thinking of how to go about doing that, but this last point I have to correct. The school board meetings, and I'll just say how many of you have attended, so we've got a question on the floor, and have not seen it been run this way. At almost the very beginning of the school board, we elicit, ask for, and hope that we have public comment on any topic beyond what's on the agenda, which is a change to the positive. And then prior to making a decision, before we take a vote, we ask for public input on what you heard during the discussion amongst this board, so that we can take that into consideration. So, I would ask in the form of a question, if any of you have not seen that on our agenda.
I have seen that, definitely, and I know that, I don't know, maybe six or so-plus years ago, when I would go to a school board meeting, I was so intimidated, I did not want to say a word. I was just really overwhelmed by the, the structure, if you want to call it, and I have seen a little more friendlier environment that I hope will continue to go into that path, and hopefully the budget committee as well.
I thought it was off. Evidently it isn't. That was the streamlined process that I mentioned, but that has been changed.
Just gonna say it's four minutes till, no.
Yes, we're, we're nearing the end of our, Fran, did you finish what you were?
Yeah, I did, thank you.
You came in a minute late, I'll have to say, I'll have to say that cell phones are supposed to be off.
No, I was here when you said that, and I thought, and I had checked it before I came in, it's, I thought it was off.
Detention.
It was the buzzer warning me that the time was like that.
Sending a note to her parents.
We've got about four minutes left, and I wanted your candidates an opportunity to make a summary statement about whatever issue they wish to speak about, and so we'll ask, we'll have one more question, and then we'll go into that. Go ahead.
Hi. I just want to address this to all the candidates. How much time have you spent, or will you plan to spend, in schools, in the classrooms during the school day with students and their teachers?
I, with having the two children in the school system, I definitely spend a lot of time, I'm in the, with the PTO, it's getting out to the other schools as well. I think that that's very important, to try to get my face out there, and to, I think it's one way that will certainly help the communication.
Joe?
The part of my plan when visiting the, the selectmen's meeting, PTO meetings, is getting out to the communities, and part of that plan would be trying to attend the schools more often. I've got the daughter at the middle school, your daughter at the community school in New Hampton, it's the same thing, Christine, just getting out to, you know, the other schools, just to see what the actual issues are out there. Steve?
Thank you, Joe. Fran?
Our budget committee has a different role that I've been in so far, but I did visit every single school, and will continue to do that as a school board member.
Thank you, Christine.
I love going into the schools and seeing how they're run. I definitely want to go visit the high school, if I hope we're allowed to go in there and do that, but I would definitely spend the time needed that I feel to visit and get to know that environment.
Obviously, I've been roving this community, the different schools that I went to, we never saw anybody come in like that to visit, so my plan would be as much as possible to actually be out there in the different schools and spend that time there.
Yeah, I, I mean, my job currently keeps me in the schools at least once a month, so that's a huge advantage, but I think now is, it would be a transition into meeting with the staff, less on the, on my safety function, but, but more on their questions and concerns, and just have a, a general view as to how the policies that the board are, are working on are, are going to have their effect, so, yeah, it'd be a huge part of this, this job, so.
Okay. I'm going to ask candidates to take about a twenty-second, collect your thoughts, because I'm going to ask you to make your final statements in about twenty seconds. Now, and I'm going to make a little test on this, the devil makes me do it. I'm going to ask you to do it based on your last name and where you stand alphabetically, will be the first person to, to give their summary. So, you make a whole few cards to see how to arrange yourself. So, take the twenty-
My hyphen name isn't there, does that count? Because that would be further bad.
We've had the twenty-second.
He's a dog.
I think D is probably current.
So, do you want me to go as roughly, Deval or Deval?
Deval.
Okay, so I go first. Hold on. I was a rap guy down in Colorado, and my boss said to me, if I couldn't spit before I would go down in class five rapid, then I couldn't call out my commands, and we would really be in trouble, so that's why I need to just take a sip of water. So, if elected to school board, you know, there are, I don't want to say it's a daunting task, but it's a huge task, it's a huge responsibility. However, it doesn't just fall on us, it falls on everybody, and I mean everybody within the towns. We've all been educated, every single one of us, whether you've gone through public school, whether you've gone through private school, or even homeschooling, schooling. We've all had that part in our lives. So, we need to, I really hope, again, to have people held responsible and to have a vision where it's measurable, and that we are competitive with what's coming down the pipe, and really meet the needs of each student at their level.
Thank you, Christine. Christine, what's next?
My hope is, you know, I do have a lot to learn, but I am willing to take this challenge. I, I love this area, and I want this to be a community where people want to come and not one where people are trying to leave. And my hope is to get out there and, you know, build this community for students to, to become wonderful things in their future, and, you know, it will be a definite challenge for myself, but I'm willing to take it on and listen to those that are, you know, willing to listen, I guess.
Thank you, Christine.
Yeah.
Joe?
I'm not sure who else.
Your baby name.
I get to. I've already discussed and mentioned my plans as far as going out and, and meeting everybody and, and, and working with the communities on their needs and, and discuss budgets and plans with the outside towns. As far as plans that I have for the budget committee, one of the issues that I've always seen over the years is a multi-year plan. I would like to see at least a three-year structure where we can have a rolling budget, so we all kind of have a better idea of what's coming down the pipe. I don't think there's any plan that we can have for the future of the school system without knowing at least a rough idea of what kind of money we're going to be spending three years from now, two years from now. You know, ultimately, if you even further out, five-year plan, getting rough for us goes away, but I think a three-year plan in budget would alleviate a lot of communication issues and would alleviate, alleviate a lot of frustration between the voters and the teachers and the school system.
Thank you, Joe. Ben, who's next?
All right. Well, you know, I'm, I'm hoping to get on the board for, for a couple of reasons. I think one of my biggest concerns probably does stem from the common core stuff, the standards, the curriculum. I think those are two very different things, if you, if you look at it. I think the standards are wonderful, I think the curriculum needs some work. I hope that, that we can work as a board to guide the administration in developing curriculum, you know, maybe around some standards, and it certainly has to be around testing, but it, it needs to be curriculum that, that doesn't handcuff us, doesn't hold us to common core, whatever the curriculum is, because each individual student's needs are what's most important. I think some of that stuff and a focus on how we do that has to be in the STEM studies, the science, technology, math, and I'm drawing a blank on any.
S T E O?
Anyway, the, the point is, that's the stuff that drives everything. Over the last couple of years, working on my associate's degree, that's, that's where it's at. It's certainly important, and we need to be able to make sure that the kids are coming out of school ready to run their own household, cook dinner, balance their checkbooks, that stuff is all important, and, and bringing technology into it as far as the learning basis. Kids that I was going to school with were well ahead of me when it came to blackboard and all these learning environments, they're good in programs, they need to be implemented sooner in the school district.
Thank you, Sam. Kurt?
You probably noticed, I didn't have a lot of opinions and didn't jump up quite that often. Really, I have no agenda, I haven't done the research on the information. I went to the website for the school district, and it can be kind of deep and confusing. I don't get the TV, so I can't watch the videos, things like that. You know, it's, it's really basically, I have no agenda, I want to learn the information that's out there and make my opinion from that based on everybody else's opinion. I don't come in with pre-formed ideas of what I'm going to do and what I'm going to be able to do, don't want to certainly make empty promises. One of the interesting things that, that I found in this facility over here is a book over here about, I don't have the title right, but it's a town that raised a child, it was somebody that came into Bristol, and the town helped raise that person. To me, the school district, people that support, the people that don't have kids that go to the school, that have to pay the taxes, their involvement in the school, not just doling out the money, but getting, finding a way to involve those people to help make a better town, better the school district, raise the better kids, so they can progress.
Last but not least, right.
Serving three years on the budget committee was a great learning term, I think I did my job well. You know, we had been in a situation of declining enrollments and increasing spending, we made a significant spending adjustment based on that enrollment decline, and so the budget committee's primarily focused on financial matters. I would like to step into also being involved in the policy matters, the goals, the direction, the internal workings, the regulatory parts of it. And part of the problem with the website is, they have to meet so many regulatory requirements, that they have to be very exact with the way they phrase things. In my fourteen years from the legislature house with the regulatory end of it, so I'm, I'm looking forward to serving in that capacity. If I earn your vote on Tuesday, and I ask you, please consider voting for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all the candidates for, if you will, exposing yourself to us, and that is no small task, to be willing to face a group of people and inspire your views. So, I do thank you very much.